Today is Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Trustee Kuzmato.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, Supervisor Viviana.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, we have two proposed add-ons, number 25, request to authorize supervisor to accept offer for southern portion of Pitchford Park, and also item number 26, which is a grant update. I have no further additions or corrections.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzmato, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. On to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the bill run. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the previous meeting minutes from October 27th, including the closed session meeting minutes from October 27th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who's the second?
Kuzmato.
Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Kuzmato, to approve the previous meeting minutes and closed session minutes. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we're moving on to public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to comment, we are, this is for agenda items only, there'll be a second comment period later in the meeting. You have a three-minute time limit. If you wish to comment on one of the agenda items, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you are participating digitally or remotely, please raise your hand digitally and you will be called upon. Okay, nobody present? Rogers, is there anybody raising their hand digitally?
No sir.
Okay. Moving on from public comment, moving on to the consent agenda.
Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent items? Okay, hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda. Motion passes unanimously. On to new business. We have a request to authorize the 2021 local road, local road pavement condition evaluation for $6,273. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, as was announced at the last board meeting, the township was successful in securing a SEMCOG grant for this PAZER study. The grant that we received is in the amount of $6,577. Before you tonight is a proposal from AEW to actually perform the work. The work actually cost more than what the grant is, so we're here tonight to approve the additional amount of money that the township will have to pay in order to get the full study done. The proposal that is before you is in the amount of $12,850. So the difference between that and what the grant is, is the $6,273 AEW is prepared to start as soon as, as soon as possible, so we're recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. So as a reminder to the board and to our residents, the PAZER study is a part of our local road improvement program. That policy is actually going to come before the board at the next meeting to finally be officially adopted. We need the PAZER study as an objective means for evaluating the condition of our residential roads as a part of that program. Is there any other questions?
I do have one question. Are we, we're approving paying $12,850 right now.
Correct.
We're getting the money back, because the way I was reading it is we're approving 6273, but...
We're approving the township's portion of the PAZER study, the grant covers the rest of it.
But we have to pay it upfront, though, or we're getting the grant and our check at the same time?
The way it works is, we have to work through the county, because the county owns the roads, and they're the agent that actually receives the grant. So when we're done with everything, we'll pay AEW, we'll then submit to the county, who will submit to SEMCOG to get reimbursed for what the grant amount is. But that's after everything is done.
Okay, but we do pay the $12,850 first?
Yes, depending on how the billing is, you know, works, but yes.
Yeah, no, I understand what the total amount's going to be, but I just want to make sure that we're authorizing it correctly. We're actually paying $12,000 out, but getting...
We're actually paying $12,000, the net effect will be the amount stated on the agenda.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
No, other than, I'd like to just note to a board members that in the fiscal analysis of the agenda, I put in there was no cost to the township. Indeed, the cost of the PAZER study is greater than the grant amount, so that's an error of my part.
We forgive you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no more discussion, there's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the PAZER study for 2021. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve the pathway abeyance for 1578026 Mile Road, parcel ID 0806200043. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, this comes before us tonight due to a parcel split and combination that would normally require the pathways be installed along the frontage, the major road frontage, in this case, 26 Mile Road. In this area of the township, there really are no pathways. These are actually development properties. One is actually actively being developed as a subdivision. The one next door should be coming into us for development here in the near future. Plan would be for those pathways to go in with the development when it, when they finally get to that point. So we've reviewed this request and are recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the pathway abeyance for 1578026 Mile Road, parcel ID 0806200043. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve the pathway abeyance for parcel ID numbers 080730001, Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, this is basically the exact same thing as what we had dealt with in the previous item. This is a property that is into us for a parcel split and combination for future development. The parcel split and combination is basically so that they can phase the project, so normally require the pathways be installed, but since the development is coming, we would rather have the pathway done with the, with the development. So we've reviewed the request and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Trustee Nevers, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the pathway abeyance for parcel IDs 080730001, 0807300013, and 0807100014. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to award the Geotech consulting services for the Pitchford Park in the amount of $8,350. Motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, we have gotten to a point with Pitchford Park that we need to get some soil borings so that we can finish up the design work for that project. We have taken in some quotes from geotechnical engineering firms to perform the soil borings that we need for the design, as well as the infiltration testing that is now required as part of the county's new stormwater standards. The proposal that you have before you actually has two quotes in it. We're only going to deal with the first quote, because I think we need to wait until the first part of the work is done, the soil borings are done, so we can make a judgment as to how many and where on the property we would need to have these test holes dug. So with that, we are recommending McDowell and Associates be awarded this particular, they're the low bidder in this proposal, in the amount of $8,350 and zero cents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
Question. Mr. Van Tiflin, how many samples do you think they'll take on that property?
Um, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure how many borings. I'd have to go back and look at the proposal, to see how many boring. It's usually, no, I don't think it's that many. I would say it's probably more in the five to, five to 10 range.
And they're mainly looking for soil composition?
Yes.
How it's built?
Yep, they need to know...
No contamination, or...
No, this is just for, for soil, so the bearing capacity of the soil to support the foundation of the bathroom building, for example, to support the pipe for the sanitary sewer, which is, which is deep. We also want to know what the soil is like, where the detention basin is going to go to make sure that those side slopes will stay stable over time.
Water table?
Yes, yes, yep. We want to know if we're going to be digging into water, especially for sanitary sewer, which is deeper, especially over by the river, will probably run into water, so the contractor needs to know what de-watering techniques they have to use, and how much water they have to deal with.
I get it. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Sure.
I'd like to publicly acknowledge the Macomb County Public Works Department for actually walking the talk on stormwater management in their new infiltration testing requirements under the stormwater design standards. We hear a lot about stormwater management and the discharges into the, into Lake St. Clair, and I want to acknowledge that Candace Miller is really working hard to get a handle on the situation. And though it may cost us a little more to do soil borings, borings, in the long run, it's, it's best for our community and the resources of the Great Lakes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato, well said. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the Geotech consulting services to McDowell. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12, we have a, we have a request to authorize the recruitment process for a position of Parks and Recs leader. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Is Mr. Tabaka online tonight?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. Sale DeCarlo, Parks and Rec Director, has requested that the HR department initiate the recruitment process for the position of Parks and Rec leader. This position being requested is a replacement for employee who's retiring in March of 2022. The position is covered under the MAPE CBA and will be posted in accordance with provisions as outlined in the CBA. Thank you for consideration, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Is there any comments or questions?
I think it's clear from Mr. Tabaka that this is a budgeted position, just want to share aboard that, yep.
Yes, this is...
Correct, this is a budgeted position.
This is the fill of retirement that is imminent.
Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Nevers, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to authorize the HR director to begin the recruitment process for a Parks and Recs leader. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 13, we have a request to authorize the recruitment process, to begin the recruitment process for a utility worker. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. Gary Wangland, Water and Sewer Superintendent, has requested the HR department to initiate the recruitment process for the position of utility worker. This position being requested is a replacement for employee 1701, who voluntarily resigned from this position. This position again is under the MAPE-CBA agreement, and will be posted in compliance with the provision, provisions of the agreement. Thank you for your consideration, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to begin the recruitment process for a utility worker. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item 14, we have a request to approve a variance request for Monarch Estates, Section 17-164B, which is a request to allow for a block length of 1,990 feet when 1,320 feet is permitted. It's located on the north side of 22 Mile Road, one-quarter mile east of future Garfield Road, and is a permanent, at permanent parcel ID number 0820300017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. The Planning Department is here tonight seeking approval of a variance request, as you mentioned, for Monarch Estates. Monarch Estates is located on the north side of 22 Mile and east of Garfield. This is part of Phase 4, it's a residential development that's already well underway. I think Phases 1 and 2 are fully built, they're constructing Phase 3 now. Phase 4 was previously approved in terms of site plan. We quite often, these residential developments stub out some streets into the neighboring parcels, and one of those streets, due to the kind of unique characteristics of the property that would be directly to the west, where the street will stub into, would not allow that street to end up going through ultimately anyways, so to avoid having a stub street that goes nowhere and just ends up as a dead-end street, we're asking for a variance, as the supervisor mentioned, for a block length of 1,990 feet, when 1,320 feet is typically the, the maximum allowed. The, the property Monarch will have all of the necessary emergency access, and the, the plans that we've seen for the property to the west would also still have the necessary emergency access.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the variance request for Monarch Estates, to approve the block length of 1,990 feet. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15 is a request to approve the preliminary plan for Marlberg Farms, located south of 23 Mile Road, 1.16 miles east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcels of 0821200014 and 0822100017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. As you mentioned, this is a preliminary plan for Marlberg Farms, this is located at 23 Mile and Heidenreich. It's actually located on both sides of Heidenreich, there are two pieces, two phases, if you will, for this development. The development has a total of 100 units, and it's just under 40 acres in total land, so that equates to just over two and a half units per acre. They're allowed to go up to three units per acre, so, so they are well under what, what they're allowed to build, and the, the access to the development will be from Heidenreich as well as to the neighboring subdivisions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the preliminary plan for Marlberg Farms, on person, permanent parcel ID 0821200014 and 0822100017. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve the final plot for Wexford Meadows, located on the south side of 22 Mile Road, west of Heidenreich, permanent parcel ID 0827100034. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. The Planning Department is here requesting approval of the final plot for Wexford Meadows. This is a smaller, just a 16-unit, single-family development, south of 22 Mile, east of Heidenreich. Access to the site is along Wexford Drive, which comes through some of the neighboring developments. All internal departments have reviewed and are recommending approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the final plot for Wexford Meadows, located at permanent parcel ID 0827100034. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve a rezoning, residential one-family to residential one-family, oh, I'm sorry, one-family suburban to residential one-family, located on parts of Sections 5, 8, 17, 20, 28, 29, and 33. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you guys are well aware, the township is in the process of removing R1S from the zoning ordinance, the category itself. This is Phase 4, and the next agenda item is Phase 5, actually, so of this six-phase process, the board has already approved Phases 1, 2, and 3. Phase 4, which is before you now, is all R1S to R1 rezoning. This rezoning will allow the landowners to continue living as is, it will not raise their taxes, and it will not prohibit a landowner from seeking a future rezoning if they so choose. What it will do is close a loophole that, that we found, as I mentioned, there's a conflict with the ordinance and the master plan, and by removing the district altogether, it will remove the potential for litigation against the township. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Does this change increase the allowable density in the number of residential units on the parcels? On this?
Yes, it, it removes the, it provides the minimum requirement to be slightly smaller, so yes, they could get a little bit more density if they so chose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato.
Just a quick question, is it 20% more density? How would you characterize the distinction between the two as far as density?
So what it's going to will allow three units per acre, and what it's coming from, which is where the conflict arises, the master plan says it can have two units per acre, but the zoning ordinance itself only allows, I believe it's 1.6 roughly, units per acre. You couldn't even get two units per acre, so we're getting rid of the category. As you'll see in Phase 5 and Phase 6, those are not all going to R1, those are going to other categories that are more appropriate based on where they're located.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Box.
Just a, just a comment on this, this follow-up. Even if the, a landowner with an R1S would come on and petition the board of the planning they'd go to first, they would probably, they would probably get an R1, and it would be very unlikely that they wouldn't get it, because generally, the surrounding property has already been R1. So that's, like what Mr. Bach has explained, this makes it so much easier when it goes into the planning and even in their office. So just for the public, this property that we are zoning, when, when the owners of that property do eventually come in, and they probably will, to request an R1, they're going to get it, because everyone around, all that property around it's already been R1, so it's, it's very hard to say, no, you can't get it now, because we generally end up in court the next morning, and because that, I would consider, if it was my property, I would consider the community to be taking my property, so, and, and that's been tried already, and it, it's failed, so just a little add-on to that.
Yeah, and if I could also add, just because it allows for more density, doesn't actually mean that all of these parcels could actually get more density. There's still other requirements about footage of, of road frontage, you know, width and depth of the property. A lot of these properties are of such shapes that they really couldn't be split and, and have multiple units built on them anyways.
If I could ask a follow-up? I'll, I'll allow it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The new zoning, the R1, it would be consistent with, I'm sure, the, the new master plan that's being proposed.
That's correct.
Is it also consistent with that existing master plan, or is that what we're changing?
Uh, it, so, yes, it's consistent with the existing master plan. It's not, what it's not consistent with is the zoning ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the rezoning from one fam, residential one-family suburban to residential one-family for parts of Section 5, 8, 17, 20, 28, 29, and 33. Members, please vote. Motion passes 6 to 1 with Trustee Kuzmato voting no. Moving on to item 18, we have a request to approve the rezoning from residential one-family R1S to residential one-family. We also have some rezoning of residential estate one-family, R1E, and residential multiple low-density, R2L, located in parts of Section 1, 12, and 28. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is the same process that we just spoke about, this is Phase 5. This phase, however, rezones many of the R1S parcels to something other than R1, there are a few in this phase that are still going to R1, but as you said, many are going to R1E, which would be consistent with the master plan, and many of the properties around that are already R1E, as well as some R2L. The properties that are being rezoned to R2L have, the reason we selected that category is we already have an approved development there, started as a consent judgment. It's now been, the, the portions that were allowed to go through Planning Commission have gone through Planning Commission, so we already know what's going to be constructed there, and, and this new zoning category would match that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions for Mr. Box?
I have one question. What's the density on the R1E?
Two units per acre.
So that's the same as the R1?
The, the R1S. Again, as I mentioned with the, the R1, there are still road frontage requirements and, you know, widths and depths requirements. The conflict with the R1S is, when you start to look at the minimum, what's required, the master plan says that those parcels can get two units per acre, but when you start doing the math, you cannot fit two units per acre in order to meet all of the other requirements.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the rezoning from residential one-family suburban to residential one-family, residential estate one-family, and residential multiple low-density, located in Sections 1, 12, and 28. Members, please vote. Motion passes 6 to 1 with Trustee Kuzmato voting no. Item 19, request to accept the resignation of a zoning Board of Appeals member. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. At this time, the ZVA has been notified that member Clerk Kristi Posey has asked to step down from her position as a full-time member of the ZVA, and we are asking that the board accept her resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Thank you, Mr. Box. Clerk Posey, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to say it was an honor to serve on the ZVA for the, for the time being that I was on it. At this point, with the legislature constantly changing the processes, rules, and, and the way that we administer the elections, I must focus all my attention on that in the upcoming years. I feel that the board will be left in good hands with the applicants that we did receive, and I have offered to be an alternate in the absence of another member going forward.
Thank you, clerk Posey. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. We have a support, a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to accept clerk Posey's resignation from the ZVA. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to one with treasurer Gillette voting no. Resignation is officially accepted, apparently with some resistance. Moving on to the next item, we have a request to appoint Mr. Robert DeBruin to the ZVA as a permanent member. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Mr. DeBruin is a seasoned professional in engineering and public works. He has performed engineering inspection and has knowledge of stormwater infrastructure. He's conducted plan reviews and is experienced with municipal ordinances. He has been a resident of Macomb Township for seventeen years, and at this time, we are asking that the board approve the supervisor's recommendation to appoint Mr. DeBruin as a member of the Macomb Township ZVA.
Thank you, Mr. Box. I interviewed Mr. DeBruin. I found him to be extremely knowledgeable. He has a, works for the municipality. Been a seventeen-year resident of Macomb Township. He's familiar with the way we govern and our history. He's familiar with the ZVA process. He's familiar with plan review and all the typical document, documentation one might be submitting when you're submitting a, for variance, and I was satisfied that he'll be a tremendous asset to our ZVA. Is there any questions or comments? Mr. DeBruin is also available. If anybody wants to ask him a question, he's available remotely. No? Okay, there is a motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Oliver, to appoint Mr. Robert DeBruin to the ZVA. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Robert.
Thank you to the trustees and the board. It's an honor to serve, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Fantastic. We look forward to having you. Moving on to the next item. We have a request to appoint two alternate members to the ZVA. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. At this time, we are asking that the board approve the supervisor's recommendation to appoint the two alternate ZVA members. Those two individuals would be the clerk Christie Posey and Melissa Faustich. Both are longtime township residents and are knowledgeable in municipal ordinances. The statutory requirements for the zoning board allows up to two alternates, as do the Macomb Township ZVA bylaws, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the two alternate members to the ZVA. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item 22. We have a request to amend the Township of Macomb Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Article, we have Article 4, Consumer Fireworks, Section 1145 and 1146.
So moved.
Support. So this came about because one of our local residents, a student who attends Romeo High School, Mr. Chris Budge, had a question for me regarding our fireworks ordinance. I was asked to zoom into former trustee Buzzno's government class at Romeo High School. Mr. Budge asked me some questions regarding why we have the fireworks ordinance and what it does and what its benefits and drawbacks are. And in the course of doing so, Mr. Tomlinson and I reviewed our ordinance and came to the realization that it was no longer consistent with state law. So thanks to Mr. Budge's question, he prompted us to review it and bring it up to compliance with current state law. So that's how this came about, and I want to thank his participation and his engagement. Mr. Tomlinson, can you add to some background to this?
So, yeah, so there's a limitations within the Fireworks Safety Act with regard to the date, or the days and times that a municipality can adopt a local ordinance to regulate those uses. Ours, as it currently stands prior to this amendment, was beyond those dates and times. This restricts actually the usage of fireworks a bit more. It's in compliance with state law. It parallels the state statute with regard to the substance as well as the penalties that may be imposed. And the imposed, the penalties being recommended for imposition or violation carries with it a $1,000 civil fine, and 500 of that goes to the law enforcement agency enforcing the ordinance. So it has some pretty significant penalties for those that are found violating the ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I do want to actually ask one more thing. So trustee Kuzmano pointed out and made actually a recommendation that we consider adding this, something to do with fireworks, into our nuisance ordinance, I think it was, or no, disturbing of the peace ordinance, correct?
Yes, that was correct.
Which actually I think is a pretty good idea, and...
But it's preempted by the statute.
Oh, is it?
I would agree with you. We haven't talked since I looked at the, the state statute this afternoon in, in response to Mr. Kuzma, Kuzmano's recommendation, but I think it's pretty clear that we wouldn't be permitted to do so.
Oh, see, and I thought it was a good idea.
It was a great idea, no question. It's just mothering that the state could've let us.
Okay. All right, well, that comment aside, are there any other comments on the amendment to the fireworks ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the amendment to the fireworks ordinance. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 23, we have a request to adopt the hard cap cost-share model resolution as set forth in the Publicly Funded Healthcare Insurance Contribution Act, otherwise known as PA 152, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So as described in the board packet, this township has never before, has always opted out of PA 152. In conversations with my colleagues, we feel like it's our financial responsibility to the township to make sure we are doing everything we can to control costs, and adopting the hard cap under PA 152 is one way we can ensure that we're doing that. So I'm asking the board to formally adopt that as, for this year, and this will be something that is an annual adoption. Is there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to request, or to adopt the hard cap under PA 152. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. The motion is adopted. Is it a resolution? Resolution is, resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item 24. We have a request to implement the healthcare insurance plan for calendar year 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Mueller, if you wouldn't mind, you can approach the podium. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Mueller is our newly hired insurance agent from TMR, and he's gonna tell us a little bit about the plan that we're putting before you today.
So in order to comply with PA 152 and maintain costs below the state of Michigan hard cap, we went out and we researched over fifty different insurance programs and funding mechanisms. We will continue to maintain those costs below the hard cap and keep benefits at the relatively the same options they are today with no cost share from the employees. We proposed that we move to a, a high deductible health plan with a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, and with funding on that $2,000, $4,000 for the employees by the municipality or by the township on the PCN piece, and funding to a 50% level for the PPO program. This maintains that there will be no cost share to any of the employees, which means no deductions out of their paychecks.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. So I want to reiterate what Mr. Mueller just said. We, through some research and, and, and taking the time to look into it, they found us an option that not only affords us the ability to provide really one of the best healthcare plans that's available, but it does so in a way that controls our costs and maintains, you know, allows us to maintain our responsibilities financially to the township and to the residents. So I think it's a big win-win for everybody. Any questions for Mr. Mueller or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. When you say a high deductible of $2,000, $4,000, how do you relatively gauge what's high and what's, what's low?
There, there is, there is a program called a high deductible, high deductible healthcare program, and what that maintains is that there is a deductible of over $1,400 for an individual and $28 for a family in order to maintain those certain, the funding mechanism necessary on the deductibles by the United States government. So the employee or the, or the deductible would be $1,400 for an individual and $2,800 for a family, but with those, excuse me, $2,000 in this plan and $4,000 for a family. But because we're below the hard cap, the township is able to fund those deductibles for the employee and put them in a tax savings account, a healthcare savings account, which is tax-free in, tax-free and tax-free out to that employee.
So the answer to my question is, it's because it's over $1,400, and the government says that that's the threshold to be described as a high deductible?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzma. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette, to implement the healthcare insurance plans for calendar 2022 as described. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item 25, is our first of our add-ons. The motion passed unanimously, as a request to authorize the supervisor to accept an offer on the southern portion of Pitchford Park. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support. So after having listed the property with our broker from the last meeting, he actually moved very quickly. He received an off, an offer from a local builder to, for the two, it's roughly two acres. That's south of Pitchford Park. That's divided by the drain. I rejected the first offer on behalf of the township. I asked the broker to continue to negotiate. He returned with, as described in the draft PA, a $250,000 offer, which is the number we had hoped to get. So I'm pretty satisfied that we're getting really fair value. I do think it's worth noting that the owner in the Pitchford Park is, was aware that, that we were likely going to divest ourselves of the piece that was south of the drain because of the difficulties in developing a piece that's completely segregated from the property that we're developing. But we are budgeting all of the proceeds from that sale into the actual development of the park. So it's being traded for playscapes and pickleball courts instead of the property itself. Any questions?
Chair just have a comment. In our current fiscal year budget, we had anticipated about $600,000 from the sale of unused properties and so forth that we would hope, we would dedicate to development of park. With this sale, we are about, almost $800,000 that we will have then available to move into the development of Pitchford Park. So we're substantially ahead of budget.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve, to authorize the supervisor to accept the offer on the southern portion of Pitchford Park. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Second item is a grant update. We have with us today our grant writer, Liz Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Good evening. I'm Liz Rowe. I'm a Macomb Township resident, and the township has contracted with me to provide grant writing services. I've been working with the leadership team and department heads since mid-July, learning about upcoming projects and researching grant opportunities which best align with the township's mission for the community. I often compare grant writing to a marathon and not a sprint when I'm speaking about it to potential clients and existing clients. For municipalities who've never had a formalized grant writing program, it can take time to research the right opportunities and make connections with federal, state, county, and foundation-level grantors. Since beginning mid-July, I've met with staff from MDOT, Macomb County, and SEMCOG to make them aware of our efforts, and they've been infinitely helpful in offering support and steering us towards grant opportunities. I've also used my existing foundation network to dig deeper into private and corporate grants for which the township may also apply. While there is not yet a lot of fruit borne from these efforts, we have commenced writing grants for projects such as Pitchford Park and the build-out of the town center area. I am pleased to report tonight that we've already had our first win in the grant area. In September, I worked with Sal DeCaro at Parks and Rec to identify a need within the aquatic facility to replace the aging handicap pull lift. We applied for two grants for this effort, one from the Ford County Community Foundation and one from the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation, which is a national organization. The Ford County Community Foundation, which is a local foundation, approved our request for $3,000, which will pay for half of the installation and replacement pull lift. We continue to await word from the Reeve Foundation, and I continue to look for other opportunities which will help offset the taxpayer cost of this vital piece of equipment. As I look to the coming months, I anticipate grant, writing grants totaling almost $1 million in the first and second quarters of 2022. While it's likely that we will not be, that will not be the total awarded to the community, this effort puts the township on the map with funders and increases our chances of receiving grant awards in the future for other projects. Thank you again for this opportunity, and thank you for the hard-working township staff who've made me feel very welcome over the last few months, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe. Is it $3,000 even that we were awarded?
It is $3,000 even.
Just like to point out that I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Rowe on, on a number of these grants, or at least sit in as she's, you know, progressed in getting the writing done for the grants and coordinating with the different nonprofit agencies, state agencies, and quasi-government agencies like SEMCOG and so forth. And I can say that although I've only been here a year in the township, it seems that in the past, it was kind of up to the department heads to do what they could by themselves to apply for these grants, and a lot of them did the best, good, good jobs, but, very good jobs. But I think we have an opportunity to do so much more with a sort of a coordinated effort that allows, you know, department heads to run their departments and, you know, somebody to coordinate the whole grant writing process and expand that opportunity. So I'm, I'm very confident it's gonna bear fruit that we'll end up with more opportunities like the wheelchair lift or, you know, placing the wheelchair lift. That, that's just the tip of the iceberg, I anticipate.
I would agree. And... And throughout our conversations, I realized that we've sort of given Liz an avalanche of projects to research and fund. And I've also learned, while there is a tremendous amount of information out there, it's very hard to wade through. I know my office would have had a very difficult time trying to, trying to dig into it deep enough to be effective at it. And, you know, a lot of these deadlines and things are, things we're starting now that aren't even, we can't even apply for until the spring. So I do anticipate things progressing and as, once we get more comfortable and get, get more of these projects underway and give Liz some more hard targets that we'll, we'll be able to achieve some great things. Any other questions or comments for Liz at this time?
I have a question. How would you measure a successful grant writing program?
That's a really difficult question to answer from my perspective because I, I look at it as every win is a win. Any opportunity in a municipal program where we may save the taxpayer money on a project is a win for the community. If you want to look at sort of the metrics behind, we apply for X number of dollars and we receive X number of dollars in return, you can look at it that way as well.
That's my next question, the metrics.
Right, the success rate. An average success rate for a grant writing program can be anywhere between 30 and 50%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the $3,000 grant just described by Ms. Rowe.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? A motion by Trustee Nevers, supported by Clerk Posey, to accept the $3,000 grant to be applied to the wheelchair lift in the pool. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to public comment. This is on non-agenda items. Please remember, if you have a comment to make tonight, we do have a three-minute time limit. You may approach the podium at the right side of the room. Please state your name and address for the record. And if you are participating remotely, please raise your hand digitally and you will be called upon. Come on up.
Hello, board. My name is Matt Elward and I reside at 48310 Anthony Drive currently, and I would like to remain there. I love my home. Been there for over 35 years. I began my search for answers and assistance regarding the installation of a 40-foot above-ground 5G utility pole on my property back on September 22nd. I contacted the Macomb Township Clerk's Office on September 30th and spoke to Mickey Todd, who told me he was unaware of the project, but that he would look into it and get back to him if he found anything out. Hearing nothing, I called the Clerk's Office back about a week later and was told that no further details were found. On October 11th, I spoke to the supervisor's office, and Beth was also unaware of this, but would get back to me concerning any information that she found. I never received a call back from her. Also, on October 11th, I spoke to Mr. Wanglin at the Water Department, and despite the fact that his department marked "Miss Dig" flags on my lot for the installation of the utility pole, he told me that he knew nothing about the project. On October 20th, I spoke at length with Township Supervisor Viviano about my concern and was told that he received the notice from Trileaf Corporation, but mentioned nothing about the information from Verizon. However, in the past week, we received a copy of a 14-page letter dated September 13th that Trileaf Corporation sent to the Macomb Township Clerk. That letter contained the details of the Verizon pole proposed to be installed on my property. The letter also provided the clerk 30 days to comment or object to the project, but instead of thinking about the residents being affected by this pole, nothing was done to support us. So the township has known about these plans since mid-September, but elected to do nothing about it. Through your inaction, you have failed your constituents on this issue. As stated previously, we, the Macomb Township residents, oppose above-ground utility poles installed in our subdivisions. In addition to the proposed pole on Mark Drive, we recently uncovered details for two other 5G utility poles in our township. One is already installed on Haverhill, west of Garfield, and one is planned for installation on White Plains, east of Garfield. So despite the postponement of the utility pole installation on Mark Drive, Verizon is still moving ahead with their plans to install other poles throughout all of Macomb Township. So we need to act now. There have been several successful grassroots efforts from nearby cities and townships that have fought off the wireless companies. One was Bruce Township, but it took the backing and support from the supervisor's office to accomplish it. We are asking you, Mr. Viviano, to meet with our team in order to understand and realize our concerns, support our efforts, and devise a plan of attack to oppose the installation of the 5G towers in Macomb Township subdivisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elward. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, board. My name is Cheryl Radkowski. I am here to speak about my concerns regarding the Verizon 5G cell tower that is slated for installation in the Cross Creek subdivision. I reside at 16890 Tower Drive in Macomb Township, which is in the Rose Point sub adjacent to Cross Creek and two streets over from the Chosen Home where the first residential 5G cell tower will be placed. I have lived at this address with my family for 29 and a half years. This is my first Macomb Township Board meeting. I am extremely concerned, upset, and frustrated that the township did not notify its residents of the plan that was agreed upon between Verizon and the township officials. I have spoken to many neighbors in my subdivision and in the numerous connecting subdivisions, and not one person was made aware of the plan to place 5G towers in our neighborhood. If this was something that the township officials thought would be well-received by the residents, it would have been on the front page in the Macomb Daily newspaper, not in a miniscule ad in the back of the want ads. Where is the transparency? As more residents become aware of this proposal, the more residents we will have ready to sign our petition to stop the placement of these 5G cell towers in highly populated residential areas. 5G cell towers are more dangerous than the earlier generations such as the 2G, 3G, and 4G because they are exposing us to a wider variety of electromagnetic radiation frequencies from up to 800 megahertz to 6 gigahertz. 5G uses a much higher frequency of electronic magnetic radiation up to 300 gigahertz. The waves are shorter and a lot more intense. The waves cannot travel far, and they need to have more cell towers in order to carry a stronger signal. They will eventually have to put these towers as close as two to eight houses apart. Can you even imagine how much radiation will be emitted into the air 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year? I'm not a scientist, but it seems like we will be exposed to extremely high amounts of radiation on a daily basis. Just for comparison, a microwave cooks your food at 2.45 gigahertz frequency, and we have always been told not to stand in front of the microwave when you cook your food. The residents of Macomb Township are entitled to know the full extent of any potential health risks associated with the exposure to electromagnetic radiation. Where are these studies? Studies are conducted by scientists independent from the wireless industry and that investigate the potential hazards of our health, the environment, and wildlife. Where are the studies that show what the biological effects that are seen in all forms such as humans, animals, plants, insects, wildlife, and microbes? Where are the studies that show electromagnetic radiation causes cancer, cardiomyopathy, neural and DNA damage? Where is the study of how much RF is safe enough to live by before your health is affected? Where is the report showing the residents what level of RF that comes off of every 5G cell tower? Shouldn't Verizon be made to carry the burden of discovery, or is that being brushed under the rug because they know what the possible health risks are? Is that why the extent of the disclosure of these towers was placed in the back of a want ad, an attempt to hide this from the residents in Macomb Township? Verizon and the Macomb Township officials did not want any public pushback, and that why, that's why we were not informed. We are here to push back. The installation of these 40-foot utility towers will not stop with Cross Creek subdivision. It's coming to your neighborhood next. Thank you for letting my voice be heard.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Schneider. I'm here to plead with the supervisor and the members of the board on behalf of the people who suffer from immune diseases and the effects of the electromagnetic fields. These are just a few of them. Lupus, Parkinson's, ALS, or Lou Gehrig's disease, rheumatoid arthritis, colitis, Atkins, Graves, multiple sclerosis, and type 1 diabetes. There is not only scientific, but medical facts that support the findings, and everyone on the board seems to be okay with 5G poles in the middle of a subdivision. I have a family member who suffers from one of these diseases. To look at them, you would never know the daily struggles they endure. The pains some days are agonizing. Watching someone you love suffer is not easy. Then you come to a meeting and then to be told, no one is going to help you, wasn't kind, and it's not something you want to hear. Mr. Viviano, we came here for your help. Please don't ignore us and claim you did not know. This is going to grow as people become more aware. Look what the people of Cross Creek subdivision did in eight days without your help. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Elward. You'll have to excuse my voice today. My husband says I talk too much, but I don't think so. But I'm going to tell you my little comment here, okay? I live at 48310 Anthony Drive in Macomb Township. I have been there for many, many years. Me and my husband have built our family there, and our kids are grown up, and they've gone to all the schools around here. I don't want to move either, but I don't want a pole on my property. This pole is on my property, on my easement. It's going to be 30 feet from my garage. I don't want this pole there. I would like to start by saying that other townships are working with the residents to get these poles moved to open fields and other areas other than subdivisions. I'm not opposed to 5G technology, but I am opposed to it being close to my house. I know it's coming in, and I know we can't stop it. And my neighbors, I don't even have a smart meter on my house and never have because of the radiation. And I can get, show you proof from my doctor, because I go to a doctor, and he showed that the radiation bothers me from it coming into my house. I will never have a smart meter on my house, and that's something all you guys should consider, too. Ms. Posey, when you received that letter from Trileaf, did you look at the address and say, "Not my house," or "My family," or "My friends," or "Board members"? Not my problem? Did you really think that that wouldn't bother the residents who have all lines underground? This is an eyesore to our subdivision and Macomb Township residents. What I don't understand is how you are not helping us or backing us up when you work for us, the residents, and we, the residents, pay your salary. The Macomb Township residents will remember this at election time. We also need more residents to come to the board meetings, and I promise, that is something I'm working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Debbie Herring, 17094, Michael Court, Macomb Township. As our elected officials, I believe that you guys were each sworn in to provide transparency and public awareness to anything that is happening within our community. You also each individually had to sign a code of ethics, expressing that you will do so. This on you guys proclaiming that you had no knowledge of this, well, Ms. Posey, we've seen your signature prior to the publication in the newspaper, but yet last week you failed to respond. What I am asking is, when you provide your commentary, that each and every one of you, please address your constituents, the transparency, and the public awareness that we deserve. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other? Who wishes to comment?
Hello, my name is Amber Markell. I'm at 48265 Hayden Rank. It's actually almost five years to the day since the first time I addressed you. And since then, a lot of things have gotten done, but there have also been some things that have kind of fallen to the wayside that I'm very concerned about. For one, on October 22nd, a young man was hit. And fortunately, he did survive, whereas my daughter did not. And it was similar conditions. It was dark. He was trying to cross the street, and it was by a school after a football game over by Lutheran North. And my concern is that we need to take better care of our residents, in particular, our children, and do what we can to keep them safe. As we're planning on more subdivisions, more residential housing, more nursing facilities or community living, we need to also take into consideration that we need to make sure that it's safe for them, too. So it comes to a point of when does revenue surpass the need for ensuring safety? As of 2020, the traffic, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, they were estimating that there's going to be at least a 10% increase in pedestrian deaths in the state, or across the United States. And in Michigan alone, just last year, there was 178 people killed just from pedestrian accidents. And it doesn't distinguish which of those are children or adults, but one, even one, is too many. And fortunately, the young man did survive. He has got a long road of recovery ahead of him. But I would like to really urge you to take into consideration some kind of safety plan to put in place, to evaluate the schools. With the park going in, maybe use some of the surplus from the park to ensure better traffic signals or hybrid devices for pedestrian crossings because it's going to be a family area, and there's going to be a lot of family wanting to use it. And we're not going to be able to use it if we can't get there. So I would appreciate if you could take that into consideration and put together a plan and evaluate and get something started. We did it over by Dakota, but there's four other school districts in Macomb Township that also need evaluated. And when it was brought up the first time, Roger Krasinski, I know he has since passed, he did state what we do for one, we have to do for all, and I'm still waiting for the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the gallery today? Roger, is anyone online who wishes to participate?
No, sir.
All right. We will move on from public comments, and we are now on to board comments. Trustee Oliver?
Thank you. This, I see Ms. Rowe left, but I just want to thank her for her efforts and congratulate her for her, our first and her first for us grant, and hope there's many more to come. That's it.
Okay, Trustee Kuzma?
I feel it's my responsibility to address some of the issues brought up by the public. You're talking, you're looking at an attorney who fought the smart meter issue and the public utilities. I went on an Open Meetings Act violation, but the people were doing exactly what you're doing. I went to the Supreme Court and backed down again for four or five years. And I want to say that when it comes to the influence that the utilities have over public policy, when the board and the supervisor's office says that, and we just talked about it with regard to the fireworks ordinance, state law preempts. So we can give you feel-good resolutions, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck about it, but I, and I do believe we should pass a resolution in opposition to these 5Gs because of what it does to the communities and the layout of our, of our communities. But I'm not, I don't want to hold out false hope that somehow or another the seas are going to part and we're going to go to the promised land. It's a, it's a hard-fought battle. I bear the scars financially of having to bring that fight to the utility companies on the smart meter issue. And you can look at the Public Service Commission transcripts as, as people fought the issue of smart meters. I will note that the first responders in many communities, including our own, are right underneath some of these cell towers. We've never been exposed to this amount of electromagnetic radiation." This, this computer right here is, is, got wireless capabilities. My cellphone on my hips got cellphone wireless capability. The wireless in the township city, so we're being bombarded by it constantly. And I agree with the speaker who indicated we are, one of our very first priorities should be the safety of the public and the pedestrians. And the board's been working towards sidewalk gap closures, but I think at any time that there's an accident, that there should be an immediate response by the township to set up traffic control devices, even temporarily to slow traffic down, and increased enforcement. That's been done in the past, and, but as I said in an earlier meeting, we all have to look out after one another as well. The police officers aren't going to be able to control traffic all the time everywhere. We have to consciously tell people to slow down and take, do care and caution when driving our roads. Other than that, I don't have anything more to say, other than I'll continue to listen and do my job and fulfill my oath of office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Trustee Lucito.
A couple of things. Number one, somebody had commented on transparency and why it wasn't shared with the community. I can, I can only speak for myself in saying that the first time I heard about the 5G tower was when Mr. Schneider contacted me. I immediately went to the supervisor the next day, or I think it was later on that evening, but he got back to me the, the next morning. And to be honest, at that time, he had not heard it either, because he said, "I'll look into it even further." He had not heard it. We did a few days later, look up this particular letter, and we see, and I, I read it a few times. This isn't exactly saying, "Here, go notify the public of what's going on." It's saying, "If you see that this is in the way of some architecture or history or a historical site, let us know. If it's not, don't respond." It does say, "This is not an invitation to comment about any planning or local process that may apply to the project. It's just letting us know right now, is this on a historical site." So I, I feel that it was, if it was filed or just not paid attention to, it was not to hide anything. It was more along the lines of, "No, it's not a historical area, so there's really no reason to comment on this." What happens after that? Again, I did not get any further information until I contacted Trileaf and was told to contact Verizon, and then was just given a form letter and back and forth. I would, sir, if you can send me whatever you have from Bruce, where you said they made some headway, please email that to me. You have my email. I would like to look into that. And I would be all for an ordinance here to protect us. But as Trustee Cusmano said, it, it may be a fruitless effort, and, and that's what I don't want to see happen. But I give you my word, I will work with you any way I can and go to the end with you to help you in this. I don't want it here either. I don't either. I agree with you, but I, I do understand where Trustee Cusmano's come from. He's been there. So I, I think he can speak on a little better. But contact me as you have, and I, I will work with you in any way that I can from my chair here. Other than that, I want to also thank Mr. De Bruin, I think is the way you say it, for his appointment to the ZBA. We appreciate your service, and that'll do it for me tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Lucito. Trustee Evers.
Yes, I would just like to say that I am simpatico with the young woman that came up and talked about smart meters. I refuse to have one on my home as well. I believe that we are bombarded with all kinds of radiation. From a personal standpoint, I have one granddaughter. She's not allowed a phone. She's not allowed a computer. There are phones and computers in the house. However, I, it's very, very destructive, all the radiation. But again, we are in an age of technology, and we seem, I feel we seem to have no, no recourse. No, but I would work with anybody that wants to contact me on this issue with the Bruce Township. I would work alongside with our residents and with our Trustee Lucito here. But I am very, very supportive of the fact that you are fighting this battle, and if there's anything I can do, I would be right there with you. And I would also, thank you. I would also like to congratulate our grant writer. A few years ago, two other board members and I attended a three or four-day seminar, I can't remember. I just know it was intense, and it was, at the end of the seminar, I felt defeated by the fact that it was so difficult to, to answer every single little nittin' and, whatever they wanted for us, and to, to complete a grant properly and to have it looked at and accepted. And so hats off to her that she has made this her career, because it, you can be the best writer in the world, but that isn't all that's involved in, in the grant writing. So hats off to her. Congratulations, and I'm so happy to have somebody in our township that's working on that. It'll be very helpful, I believe. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Evers. Treasure Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of, I guess, three quick things. One, I would be very curious to hear how changes were affected on the Verizon issue in Bruce Township. I'm unaware of that. I, and the reason why I'm, I'm very interested in hearing that is because I understand that when a national or international company is going to be putting in a series of these towers across the country, their first stop isn't here. Their first stop is the federal government to preempt here, because they don't want this happening in thousands of town halls. They want to prevent us from being able to do anything. Other words, they wouldn't roll out these projects. So the first stop is, you know, US Congress to set up a legal framework that neuters us from being, to be, to have an effect on these things. So I am curious what happened in Bruce Township and be interested in finding out what happened there or any other places where you folks have heard where there has been an opportunity to, to make a difference. I would also like to chime in, though. I, I don't know if the, the letter to our clerk that was referenced is the same letter that was passed out to us, but I understand where, if I were to receive, had, had received this letter, it would not strike to me that there is a, there's information being requested or permission being requested. It's a letter saying, "Are you have any information on historic or Native American burial ground type stuff regarding this particular parcel of property?" So whether by design or whatnot, the letter from Trileaf Environmental Architecture and Engineering in no way communicates the reality of what was being proposed on that parcel of property. At least I wouldn't perceive it as such, reading it. I'd be like, "Oh, what's this all about? Something about, you know, historic property zone? Is that, I'd have to respond to let them know if there's historic property?" There's always, it's not self-explanatory. I, I certainly would have found it puzzling.
There's fourteen pages that go with it that show Verizon, the pole, every, where it's gonna be located. We just didn't print that all off, but on the bottom of that letter, or towards the end, it does say, "If she has any objections, that she can respond." But if you'd like to see those other forty.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I appreciate that you brought it to our attention, and I just wanted to say, it would have been, just based on this, I would have not gathered much information from it. So again, I look forward to hearing back from what's happened in other communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasure Gillette. Clerk Posey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the letter, we reviewed the letter, and our comments and statements were based on, we confirmed that it wasn't on a historical preservation office. And that's how we responded accordingly. And with regards to the publication, we published the notice as we were required to and as we do with everything that we publish in the same manner. We don't pick what goes on the front page or what goes on the back page. We publish the same way with each issue or item that we're required to publish. To say that I picked and denied to respond or do anything to this because it's not my house, not my home, is inaccurate, heartless, and not factual at all. Once we received the information, and to say that we didn't respond, I did get a message from Mickey Todd that Mr. Alward did call my office, had his, these concerns. Once he expressed to me what those concerns were from Mr. Alward, I went to the supervisor's office. I think by that time, he had already received an email from you, and we had discussed it. And the, what we discussed was gonna be reviewed with counsel. We believed it to be a state issue, not a local issue, and that the supervisor's office was going to respond so that everybody, everybody's getting the same information and not getting different information from all of us on the board members. So most of it was channeled through that office from there, and, and he did respond and have a conversation with you, and I did follow up to make sure that that was done. If there are avenues which we are looking into, I mean, we agree that the state controls the jurisdiction of the towers, and we, we are, we don't control that or have a say in it. If you ask the board right now to vote on it, I, I could probably assume that all of us would vote no. We haven't stopped. Just because we're not announcing it doesn't mean we're not working behind the scenes. In fact, I'll, I'm sure the supervisor will comment on it eve, when his comments come up, but he is in contact with Lisa McLean, McLean's office, who's our senator, and we're trying to see what, what can be done at that level. So nobody, just because it hasn't been announced, we don't want to give false hope. We don't want you to believe that there's something we can do that we can't, but we are working behind the scenes to try and address your concerns. And it may not be the answer you want, but at least we're trying to get all the answers to your questions. And once we get all that and we've reached all the levels that we can, then we will, we will respond to you either way, whether it's good news or bad news. But it hasn't stopped. We have taken it to a different level. And I'm sure Mr. Viviano will comment on that when it's his turn. But never the intent was, "I don't care. I live on the south side of the township, so you're right, it is probably coming to my neighborhood as well." So I, I, I am for, I'm totally for trying to find a solution. If a resolution helps, which I don't think it will, but if that was something that helped Bruce Township, we would be willing to do that. It would take nothing for us to do that, and we will do that. We just want to make sure that when we are doing it, it's gonna be something that can help. And if it can't, we'll tell you that. And that's what we're trying to say, is we're trying to find the answers, may not be the ones you want, but we are working to get something for you. You can contact us if you want to set up a team to come meet with us. We'll sit and meet with you. But we want to try and hit all the answers and the resources so that you're not just getting blank answers and blank stares from us. So we will work with you. If you want to contact my office again, or Mr. Viviano's, and we'll sit with you and talk with you. If you have specific questions, if we can have someone that can answer them, we will try and get those specific questions answered. But we haven't stopped. We're, we're trying to do something about it. We just don't know what we can do at this point. So on to the incident with the schools, I just wanted to let you know, we were there that Monday. The supervisor and myself met with the school. Already DTE is in the process of installing additional lighting in that area. We have contacted the State Police Transportation Information Association. They will start a study, but that has to be initiated by the school principal. So that, I have followed up with them. He has initiated that. We have been in contact with our sheriff's department to help assist with football games, with the traffic flow. And also, we have made improvements on the Lance Cruz property since we've made the improvements on Dakota. So it takes money and resources, obviously, and Mr. Van Tiflin and I have been working on the Lance Cruz project for three years now. So it does go in stages and phases, but we are making sure that we pay attention to all those areas, because it's very unfortunate that these accidents do happen. We've also have our grant writer that spoke this evening, working with SEMCOG. They have a safe walk-to-school program where they come out and they will make recommendations and suggestions to help improve the safety in that area. So we are working on that as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Okay, so I guess it's finally my turn. So Amber, I appreciate you coming out here tonight. You know, the, what happened a week ago last Friday was just terrible, and another reminder that we have to be extra diligent when it comes to our school areas and our roads. Since this board has been seated last November, it's really been one of the things that we put most of our time into. I've been speaking with Chepall Valley Schools about continued improvements and what can still be done there. I've been talking to the Road Commission about road widenings and turn lane and intersection improvements, specifically with this incident. As Clerk Posey said, we immediately met with the principal over at Lutheran High North. I authorized, we have four new lights going in between Romeo Plank, streetlights going in between Romeo Plank and Garfield, and we're converting the two that are there to brighter LEDs. So hopefully, Mr. Van Tiflin, when, when do we, and I know that they promised to get us that, at the top of the list of their construction list, but do we have any idea when those lights might get put in?
We haven't received anything. We've sent another email to them, asking them for an update as to where they're at. We, we sent them the signed agreement and the check about two weeks ago.
Okay. So as soon as we get an update as when those lights are gonna go in, that will, that will help. I'm, have a meeting set up with SEMCOG. I know we've met with them in the past about the safe walk-to-school program, but specifically, I want to talk to them about any innovative school crossings, school zone, and not just for school times, but I'm even hoping they have some solutions for football games, school dances, anytime where there's a crowd of students at the school, where we can bring attention to the fact with blinking street, speed zone signs, anything that makes it safer. So we're continuing to look into it. Unfortunately, the pace of the government is extremely frustrating, and we wish we could move faster. So, but we are continuing to, we won't, we won't stop making it safer, I promise. To our residents who are addressing the 5G issue, it's like I said, last meeting, I appreciate you all coming out here. I am completely sympathetic with the situation that not only you, but all of us face. We all live here. We're all in the same boat when it comes to whether or not one of these 5G utility poles comes to our neighborhood. Like Trustee Cusmano, I have been on your side. I have fought utility companies. I understand how frustrating and sometimes demoralizing it can be. It is worth fighting, though, even, even if the prospects are tough. I, I think it's worth making our voices heard as much as possible. I just spoke with Lisa McLean today. She has not given up either. We're planning future discussions to find out what path we have open to us. As a few of the board members here said tonight, and I, I think, Mr. Alward, as we've discussed, the labyrinth of who's responsible for what is very complicated when it comes to utilities. And I suspect they designed it that way on purpose, because we're in this, we're in this position where we have something we're not particularly happy about, but it still seems to be coming. You know, the FCC controls whether or not 5G is effectively legal. And once they declared it was legal, no state could say no to it. So 5G is here, as far as, unless the FCC were to overturn that decision, it's coming. Where it goes exactly is more of a state issue, and to a lesser degree, a county issue, because they control the right-of-ways in our township. The one jurisdiction that has almost no say is the townships, like us, which I think is unfortunate. I, I, we're the ones who speak for you, and despite the fact that we all want to, the, the rules and regulations are in our way to, to help affect any change. But again, that doesn't mean we've stopped. I know that if we're not, you know, out there talking about exactly what we're doing, but we're here in the offices in this building, talking to various officials, trying to find a path forward. You know, our efforts haven't stopped. I know, Trustee Lucito, you know, if you're willing to continue to serve point on this, I'll continue to work with you and make sure you're included in any meetings or conversations we have with other officials so that we can find a path forward. So we, we haven't stopped. I know it's frustrating. I wish I had an answer that you wanted right now, but right now, I don't have it, but we're, we haven't stopped. but we're here in the offices in this building, talking to various officials, trying to find a path forward. You know, our efforts haven't stopped. I know trustee Lucido, you know, if you're willing to continue to serve point on this, I'll continue to work with you and make sure you're included on any meetings or conversations we have with other officials so that we can find a path forward. So we, we haven't stopped. I know it's frustrating. I wish I had an answer that you wanted right now, but right now, I don't have it, but we're, we haven't stopped. So.
Do you know when they're going to be turning you on?
I, I don't.
Your electrical boxes and everything.
They, they don't. It's just not information they tell us. I mean, they don't ask us for a permit. They didn't ask us where it should go. The only notice we get is, "Hey, are we, this, this is going to be in this spot? Is there any historical significance to that spot?" That is literally the only, the question they ask us. And Mr. Van Tiflin, if I could put you on the spot, how often do utility companies send us that, that same notice?
Once or twice a year, maybe.
Yeah.
You know, we might get something.
So we get, it's, it's sort of, anytime they put up something new, we get this, "Is it histor, is it affecting anything historical?"
Or other categories that they, that they ignore. So you do have.
It's, so these are, excuse me, this is not, unfortunately, not a discussion. This is a comment.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to talk.
But like I said, we haven't given up. We're still, I'm still setting meetings with the other public officials. Everybody's aware of it, from the Congresswoman, state rep, Yarick, Senator McDonald, myself, this board, and our county officials. So everybody has been talking about it. If we can come up with something, we'll continue to talk to you about it. We're trying. Other things on my list here, I want to mention that we have the Holiday Lighting Festival coming up on December 3rd. That's 6:30. I'll make plans now for Santa to arrive for the holidays. There'll be children's activities, music. I'm not sure if we're going to have reindeer this year again, but I hope so. It should be a great event. Last year was great. We were able to pull it off during COVID, and we had a completely drive-through event. And this year, we're hoping to return more to our standard tree lighting and celebration at the rec center. So hopefully, we'll make time to come out. And lastly, I do want to mention that tomorrow is Veterans Day. I hope everyone takes the opportunity. I know we're all very busy in today's day and age, but I don't think there is any reason to take a moment, pay respects to a veteran or a service member and show that, you know, what they do and what they have done for us, you know, cannot be thanked enough. And we appreciate all the service and everybody that's fought for our freedoms in this country. So that's all I have. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session. It's, so, sorry, I'll read it. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session regarding pending litigation of Assorti v. McComb Township, which is a McComb County Circuit Court case 2021-1809-CZ per MCL 15.268E. So moved. Support. Any discussion? Clerk Posey, we will call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasure Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee, or Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That motion carries unanimously. We are now entering the closed session. The time is 8:03 PM. We have returned to open session. The time is 8:19 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize counsel to pursue settlement strategy and negotiations as discussed in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Motion by trustee Kuzma, supported by trustee Lucido, to proceed with the settlement strategy as discussed in closed session. Members?
It's on Assorti versus McComb Township, 2021-1809-CZ.
Thank you. Yes. Members, please vote. Roger, you might have to vote for, vote for the clerk. Is the clerk voting yes? Motion passes unanimously. You have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasure Gillette, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Members, I'm sorry. Members, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. This meeting is adjourned.